City Council order, are there any agenda additions for changes?
I do not have.
Amber, you with us?
I am.
Excellent, Amber's online, Sarah is not going to be able to join us tonight. All right, with no agenda changes, we'll move on to public to be heard. This is a portion of the meeting where folks can bring questions or concerns to the council on items that are or not on the agenda. Anyone in the audience here has anything they'd like to share, the question doesn't appear so in the room. And I don't see any hands up online, so give it another couple of seconds. And hearing none, we will move on to the first business item, which is a conversation with Rick Jones, our Public Works Superintendent. Hot seat is right in front of you. Good evening. How are you? Good, thanks for coming. Thanks for sharing your year with us.
Yeah. Kind of a real briefing.
Yeah.
In depth really want to get into this, I'm sure there'd be some questions, but Marcus is in here, so it's gonna be a few questions last. I figured the right side of the room, I was gonna.
Just wanted to get that out of the recording.
Just go say yes. Marcus is free to stop by anytime for the shop and ask me questions. Saying that.
Now you've done it.
Now you've done it. Was a little later, the right side of the table, I'm.
Well, why don't you just, for the, for the, we have all of this in front of us, but for the sake of those watching or watching later, why don't you just kind of run us through what you shared with us?
Sure.
And, you know, as much detail or as little detail as you like.
Okay, a couple of the quick bullets of the, the back, the back.
You have an iPad with like circles and arrows.
Back in the day, yes, not so much this, yeah, there's one little thing I said, I could just do a paper cheat sheet on this one, easy. That was good, that was fun.
Got one shell and tell prepared if.
Right, yes, we have something queued up just in case.
We have, we have to guess it though, I bet.
We might give you a hint. So some of the things in the last six months. One of the big things is we finally took delivery of a new pickup truck, which we were almost a year, probably a year out with that thing and the truck that we were trying to trade in would not have passed state inspection again, so it's getting a little nervous, we're gonna have to park that in the corner of the shop somewhere or out in the garage, because we do, we do let EJR P use a vehicle or two, two in the, in the winter time, they're using one right now, they're having vehicle problems. So I think they're in the same boat trying to get stuff fixed and get stuff ordered, it's just tough out there. So that was great to see that, that was a, that was a big plus. And we also ordered a new dump truck plow and wing. And that's gonna be about two years to get out, to get, so it's not this winter, but next winter will be, you'll see it on the road. They're just not making them yet, the supply is not there and the, the build slots, like for the dump trucks, the build slots. We're hoping to do, that'd be my next one here, but we're hoping to order another one next month. So we can get that on the bill slot and more than likely it would be probably two years on the dump trucks, you've got the chassis part of it. So you get that, once they get that in, then it goes to the body people, they put all the dump bodies, the wings, the plows, so, and they're way out too. So it's, yeah, it's, it's way different than it used to be. Yes. And we have, yes, staff shortage, we have, but there is, in the last three to four weeks, we did hire a part-time person for Public Works to help mow lawns, retired gentleman, some of you might know him, Ray Weed, he's on fire, he used to be on the fire department for a long time. He's been doing great, we got him out there mowing and even in this heat, I was kind of a little questionable how he didn't, he keeps coming back, he says he likes it, so yeah, he's doing great. And, and admin with wastewater and Public Works, Patrice, Patrice, I have really hard time thinking of that name. And she's, no, like three weeks, I think, and she's catching on great and I, that's, she's gonna be a good fit, I can, yeah, no, it's gonna be good, it's gonna be a big help, yes. Working on the Main Street water line. I've been updating on some of that, we're gonna go, you know, we've got some struggles there, we're gonna try to go back out, we're gonna go out to bed this, this winter. So we can hopefully get that, we will get it done, I should say, in the springtime, to get that wrapped up. Yeah, ledge was a biggie, yep. The Crescent Connector, still plugging away, I don't know if you folks have seen, you probably have driven by or sat in traffic waiting to go through it. That is coming along good, yes, no, that's, and it looks like there's, they have to have a September, September completion date. And from what I'm seeing, they're gonna, they should be able to beat that a little bit, I don't want to jinx it.
Yeah, I don't know if it was intended the other night, but it was open. So I drove it.
Right.
Parked right in the middle of it, walked around.
Yeah.
Looks amazing, and I hear the traffic light poles or the arms are going up, I read tonight.
Yes, the mast arms, that'll be, in the next few weeks, you're gonna see, well, you're seeing some good difference, are good changes now, and it's really starting now, yeah.
I, I guess the question, not to interrupt you too much, but the question for me now is like, how, how is it gonna open, are people just gonna wake up? How are we, how are we gonna do that? We don't have to get into it.
You wanna like do a, but I mean, if you wanna do like a ribbon.
No, I.
Like a ribbon cutting or?
Do we order the eight foot scissors now?
I don't, I don't know where, now you're probably gonna be in back order, take forever to get them.
It's gonna be two years to get the scissors, they cover the truck.
So, right, yeah. So. We haven't.
Well, I, I didn't mean ceremony, I really don't want, I photographed people for years with those stupid scissors, I'm not doing that. Like Amber can do it, it's very much a VP role. No, I meant just, just quite literally, how, like, what's, how is it gonna function, are we just gonna announce like, hey, Monday morning?
Well, like when, when Susie Wilson Road, when they went from one lane going right and two lanes going left to two lanes going right and one lane going left, they just did it.
They just did it, yeah.
Um, well, I'm hoping the, the sign board to be, the outreach with Ashley and stuff, you will put stuff.
Well, that's kind, yeah, I mean, you know, like.
You're gonna have that stuff.
Is there a plan to, you know, we don't have to get into it now, like I said, just to start letting people know the, how and why it's gonna be cool for you and what, you know, remind folks like, do try it, because you might find that it gets you through quicker, all that kind of thing.
Once, once we get closer to it, I'm sure.
I know, better work.
And just to clarify, since you mentioned that, Raj, it is not open for people just through.
No, I figured.
Traffic through there, just.
Right, so for viewing public, technically you're not supposed to drive through there.
Yeah.
If it makes you feel better, I turned around and went out the way I came, so I didn't quite make it, I didn't go over the tracks.
Oh, you didn't, so you really.
Go halfway.
You really didn't drive it.
Not so much, I walked.
No, yeah, so you really.
I wasn't really there.
No, you weren't really. Oh, we recently got some new software for our meter reading, it's a cloud-based, which is a lot easier for us to use. Instead of downloading a thumb drive and attaching that and going out, driving and come back, download. It's basically you grab that, you got an iPad or iPhone or Android device, you go around with that, with, we have an MRX, another machine that hooks to it, syncs to it. And you can drive around and, and what I can do, think about well over 3,000 accounts, almost 3,000 counts, probably in about four hours spend on traffic.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, no, it goes, it goes good, if traffic's a mess, most, we're gonna find out when, once we start planning a little more, find out what roads we can skip and it will still catch. You know, so I'm trying to find out, I don't have to hit every road, I could skip one and then, but yeah, no, it's been great, so that's, that's good. And I think we've got, probably got 300 to 350, I'm gonna guess, more meters to change out, so we can read those, because we still have some to go around physically or to go to the house, but we're still plugging away on those. So the look ahead, six months, again, like I said, we're gonna try to order a new, we're gonna order a new dump truck next month. And we're kind of debating whether to go, it's a CDL vehicle now. We're kind of, myself and Jamie, the former, we're kind of debating back and forth, if we go knock it down to a non-CDL vehicle. Because of the, we're having a hard time hiring people and especially CDL drivers. And we're kind of debating it, we're gonna, you're gonna lose some capacity in the, in the truck bed itself, it's a little lighter of a vehicle, obviously. You know, so some of the bigger storms, I might struggle a little bit, I, we're kind of debating it, it might be, you know, the writing's kind of on the wall, what we've seen in the last few years, that we just can't get many CEO drivers to apply, or applications period, really, we're not having, we're not getting much back, way back in the day, we'd get 50, 60 applications. You know, for a public works position, and now we're lucky to get a dozen, if that, yeah, it's in the, the dozen we get there. I don't believe they're from around here and I don't believe they want to work for Essex Junction, so they're, you know, for whatever reason, like they come in like that, but yeah, it's, it's been difficult, it's definitely difficult. Again, for next year, want to finish up Main Street Water Line, finish up that Crescent Connector and the lead survey for the lead and copper, the lead, we have to go, and they should be wrapped, they'll, they'll be wrapping that up in October to put out.
Yeah, how's that going, are they getting a decent response to you now, or?
I think pretty decent, yeah, from what, from what I'm seeing, we gotta get a, we're gonna get a little rundown from on here fairly soon, so. Regina will be able to share those numbers, we did, but I think it's been going pretty good, just recently wastewater just got their, their little flyer and Chelsea asked me to just to call, so I just talked to them about that, so. So they are still just put, they're still putting them out.
Who is the hire that you're referring to, hire someone?
For Public Works, full-time Public Works employee, yes, yeah, Public Works employee, yep.
Can you speak a little bit, Rick, to the difference, I know you touched on it just a sec, but between a CDL and a non-CDL truck? You said you might struggle a little bit with some of the bigger storms, those, that vehicle is 26,001 pounds, requires a CDLB.
Correct.
And then under that, so when we think about what you're driving around the city now, big dump trucks, are they two-thirds of the size, or do you have any general?
Yeah, trying to do the numbers. I think we can put 10 ton of salt on the seven yard, there's a bigger truck.
Yep.
And I think we get, I think it's gonna be about five to five, five and a half on the, what we call a low pro, the, that's the non-CDL.
And, and I'll say.
They're great little trucks, that we have one right now and it's a great little truck, we use it in the hill section, some of the tight spots, but we're almost thinking we have to go.
And, and I'll tell you, as someone who has a bee, it's not just you that's having trouble.
No, no.
People with bees, they're just nowhere, I mean, I have open positions in my employment that we just can't. They're just non-existent.
No, no, I didn't mean to imply, it's not.
Oh, no, no, I didn't, I'm not inferring, you did, I'm just.
Everywhere.
Yes.
Yeah, nobody wants to be a trucker anymore.
And then you have some paving activity going on around the city.
Yes, we do.
In the Acres, and I just came down Prospect and I noticed that's milled, so.
Yes, we have some ground up and we, maybe we can go to that slide, maybe.
Cause I have a lot of friends that are in the Acres that are ecstatic about their, their paving activities.
Oh, there's definitely a few down there, I have an act here.
I have Naggies.
Yeah, very.
I'm hearing from most everyone.
So yeah, we got it highlighted in the purple. And you'll see Prospect is like the top and the bottom of it, years ago, we had that section in between redone when they redid the, I believe it was Summit Street, so they did each, they, so instead of trying to go over that, we really don't need to.
Yeah. So I will say, yeah, as, as someone who drives South Summit quite a bit, I've noticed the activity there and
Yes.
And I talked with a bunch of the neighbors through there and they're very, very happy to see a new road surface coming in.
Yes, no, that'd be.
To that area. And then.
It'll ride nice and it'll, and you can clear the snow off it better, so you use less salt, because, so you know, with the nooks and crannies, we can't clear it as good.
It's probably a little bit hard for folks to see, so we've got Prospect Street.
West Hillcrest.
West Hillcrest, Cherry Street, Cherokee, Iroquois, Abbot.
But not all of Iroquois and not all of Abbot, next year, when I probably should put that in my little next year plan, that's right, the, the water line on Iroquois. We're gonna do a water line from, uh, South Summit to Orchard. And then the whole road will be reconstructed from there and then also all the way down to Park Street, the Road to Rooker, yes. So if you're a big rollerblade fan or scooter fan, or you could.
Funny, it's funny you said that, because I was walking the dog the other night and our, the couple who was the, the big daily rollerbladers.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty laps, the neighborhood, I think they do, went by and I think what they basically said was, when are we on the paving list?
You can point to this, let's say, hey, you can head over that way and.
Yeah. Do some kind of weird shape.
Yeah, they can make a, I don't know about prospect.
Look like on Strava, but.
So Prospect and West Hillcrest are pretty steep, so hopefully they got good breaks.
And then the last piece I have for you is, I don't want to go without acknowledging Ron Bundy and his trip to Plainfield.
Yes, yeah.
With the, with the super sucker, whether we're calling it nine thousand or seven thousand. Seven thousand, okay.
I thought the new one was nine.
We went from five to seven.
Right, right, right.
So I talked with him a little bit, he was out on Maple Street doing some, some work out on the roadway, so I stopped and chatted with him for a minute, he said that they cleared a thousand feet of pipe, and he got to feed a balloon insert that they then enlarged and it sealed the pipe off, so that if any more river water was to come, wouldn't make their way to the treatment plant, and he said in all his years of doing things that he's never, never had that experience, so that was great. And he said that he got down there in the afternoon, he was back same night and, but he had people ahead of him and behind him checking the road, because they got there, they didn't, I don't think they had any idea how big that truck was when he got there. And so there were some areas that were, you know, tricky navigation, so I didn't want that to go unsaid, because I think anytime that we can, you know, assist our neighbors. And it's fantastic and Ron's a great guy and that truck is truly amazing and he speaks so highly of it, so.
Those two, it's, yes, you know.
Very good off, so, and I just didn't want that to go unsaid, and so we're very grateful to him that he did that outside of normal hours and, and he had such a good time with it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm glad he took me seriously with the pictures, we really, I did really want to see, so.
I text him, asked for pictures. So he did get some, yes.
You've got a new shop on here.
Oh, yes, that's right, wait a minute, I did.
We are.
We can't fit stuff in that.
We are keenly aware.
Yeah, yes.
I just wanted to, it is always sort of front of mind, just working on it, so just wanted to acknowledge that, totally, totally aware of the conditions.
Thought this would be a great opportunity to throw that out there again.
No, we didn't, we didn't, we knew, but it would have been odd if you didn't mention it.
Probably would have, yeah, you're right.
What's wrong with? But no, seriously, it's, it's very much in the conversations.
Cause that super sucker 7,000 just barely.
Does it fit now?
Barely fits into that. Yeah, I know, that was one of the things we, we expect it had to be able to fit in that, and that was very, very tight. But they made it.
You gotta keep it half full just to get in the shop.
Kind, yeah, gotta have it weighted down with some water, yeah.
Amber, any questions for Rick?
No questions, thanks, Rick, for coming.
That's no problem.
You were on a serious delay, video was, that's all right. Yeah, no, I appreciate you coming. And appreciate your management too and your help with all of the various complex street disturbance projects that have been going on for the last couple of years, it's not, I'm sure it's not easy getting, fielding a lot of the a lot of the reaction, but it's all gonna look great when it's done.
Yes, it'll be great, right when it's done, there we go.
Thanks for all you do, Ricky.
Yes.
Really proud of our public works.
We try, we try our best.
You guys are great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your night. All right. Move on to 5B interview and interview someone, and, well, let me read it, as it's written, sorry, interview and consider appointments to the Tree Advisory Committee Development Review Board and Planning Commission, and we have one person tonight to be interviewed. Andrea Shortsleeve, and I'm gonna, yes. Come on up to the seat, thank you for joining us. We have what you shared with us, but if you could just introduce yourself and maybe say one or two things about, you know, why you're, why you're looking, what your interest is, why you're looking to participate in the tree advisory committee.
Sure, my name's Andrea Shortsleeve, grew up here in Essex, third generation, actually. Professionally, I'm a habitat biologist for the Department of Fish and Wildlife, so I spend my days talking to people about improving their forests and fields to benefit the wildlife and just our, our basic way of life here. And growing up here and moving away and coming back, I think I have a perspective of, I have a picture of what Essex was and, and now what it is, and I live in, in the Acres and I see a lot of my neighbors cutting down these big, beautiful trees that make Essex just like a really unique, beautiful community and it saddens me, and so I saw this opportunity as a way to, one, give back to my community that I really have been a part of for the last, you know, 40 years. And also just use my professional experience and knowledge in a way to, to serve the community that way. Not seeing that there is a, a conservation commission any longer in the city now that we've, we've split, I felt like this was the best way to, to do that, so.
Great. Just go around the room, quickly, Amber, you're on a delay, so I don't know if you're hearing us, but I don't know if you have anything.
I'm all set, thanks.
Well, I just wanted to remark that your experience and background is really tailor-made for this committee, I'm very grateful that you decided to apply.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm, I would echo that. And I'm very delighted to see the, the list of applicants we've had across the board for all of our committees.
It's been an amazing round. Yeah, I can echo the, the, watching trees go, I'm over on the west side of the fairgrounds and I feel like once a week, there's a tree company and they're removing something that's probably fifty plus, sixty years old. I've done it, but it was dangerous, but yeah, it's, it's difficult to see. Have you been keeping up with what the tree committee's been doing to date, are you sort of familiar with any of it?
You know, I'm not incredibly familiar with it, I do know that there's an Emerald Ash Borer plan, and then just working like at Maple Street, but other than that, I, I don't know specific details. It's just, it wasn't something that was on my radar until really seeing the opportunity come up.
That's fine. Great.
Well, our, our two current, two of our current members, Warren and Nick, are quite the experts.
Yes.
So be a great group.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, Nick grew up with Warren's daughter and, yeah, knowing that he was the arborist in Burlington and, and around for a long time.
Yeah, we, we're, we're pretty lucky to have a deep bench in that, in that regard, and you, you mentioned conservation, it'd be, it'd be nice to sort of bring that sense of, I'm not saying that's missing from their approach at all. But you're right, we don't have that connection with that committee anymore, and so, you know, bringing some of that viewpoint back or into that group would be great. Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything else for you either, I appreciate you coming and waiting through the first item.
Yeah, sure, no, that was, it's nice to know that I'll be getting a new road on Iroquois. Maybe my fire hydrant will get plugged back in, but. I guess. I guess from my knowledge, what sort of commitment or requirement is there being on the committee and like, I guess, expectations from me?
If you want to go first.
Yeah, so the Tree Advisory Committee, they meet once a month, they also are a pretty active committee, they've are connected with the, I forget the name of the program, but we have the nursery in Burlington, and so there are some volunteer hours that the committee members do as well as they really recruit lots of other people to help with that work over at the nursery, so we've got trees to bring into the city and plant. And I think there are also, some of their meetings are a little bit more active and out in the community than just sort of sitting around here in the table, so it's, darn, yeah. So it's a good committee, but for the most part, it's a once a month meeting.
Okay. Great.
There is a stipend available, encourage people to, you know, make use of it, it's, it is valuable time, and we do appreciate it, and yeah, it is very much what people make of it, I think, and like Regina said, it's a very active, committed group. Things like, you know, I was just reading through the Development Review Board minutes and, you know, they're active in applications for development, they're sought out for response on applications for development and definitely provide that input and is listened to, I think, because of the level of expertise.
Great.
So that's really nice to see.
That's good to hear.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Of course.
We're letting you know very soon, I believe.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Um, and also I just can update folks, so at our last meeting, we had a number of interviews and we were sort of testing out who might be willing to sort of fill some seats that we didn't have enough applicants for, and so since that meeting, Luke is very much open to joining the DRB, so that's what's recommended for you, and also Christie is very much interested in being on the planning commission, so those are the recommendations for you, still don't have any applicants for the Community Advisory Board. And then on Tree Advisory, you do have two open positions with three folks who are interested, so have to make that decision and we're still recommending here that bike walk advisory committee be reduced from eight down, down to six folks.
Go ahead, sorry.
Regina, about the Community Advisory Board, are there vacancies from the town as well?
I believe so, I am not able to recall off the top of my head exactly how many.
I wonder if it might be a good idea in the future to have Chief come and just talk about why the vacancies are persisting and why why we're having trouble finding appropriate committee, community members to sit on the committee.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want it to stay stagnant.
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
Do you talk to people about it, and it's generally the same sort of, you know, not sure, it seems charged or time.
Well, you know.
I'm curious if what Andrew's doing, if there's, if the, the police department's doing much, you know, what, what they're doing to recruit as well, since it's there. But I think this, this last round of, of, of appointments seemed both excellent and deeply qualified. But sometimes it's hit or miss, right, sometimes we're.
Right.
And for this one, it seemed to be difficult from the get-go.
And it just, in looking at the cap minutes, it seems like they're kind of in a holding pattern of education. They're having, so the charged aspect of it, I don't think actually is there, because they're just really just teaching people what the police do.
Right, I wonder if we could reach out to one of the current members and maybe have people that might be interested but are unsure, filter to that person, maybe just answer some questions.
Yeah, and wasn't there, isn't there also this like training program for citizens about the police, it's like a two or three months.
Yeah.
Maybe Citizens Academy, that one, maybe, maybe people who have gone through the Citizens Academy might be
Sought out.
A pool that we can tap.
Yeah, that's a great point, and I think, you know, the, the two people that were involved in getting it going, I think their year of advising is now up.
It's up, yeah.
So, yeah, it's an interesting point in, in that committee's existence.
Yeah.
And we're at a, we're at a crossroads where it could either just kind of fade away or it needs to be reinvigorated, and I think it's our responsibility.
Reinvigorated.
Yeah, and, and look, if it, you know, we were very adamant that we have a, an equal representation between the two communities.
Yeah.
And if that's not I mean, we share the police department and we're not so disparate that we're like these strange neighbors, so if that's not gonna quite work out, I'm happy to revisit that breakdown of where folks are from, so if, you know, it's four and two, or it's five and one, or whatever. You know, it's serving the same police department and essentially the same community, you know, they're responding to both places, so the inter, the interaction there and the conversations benefit us regardless of where. It would be nice if we were, but it's, I think right now for me, it's more important that it's populated than where.
Yeah.
How the representation number breaks down. So, yeah, so if there's anything that been there, you know, I'd be interested in their feedback on that, if they think that might help, if there just is more interest, I doubt it, but there could be.
It might just be a case of us needing to call more attention to it, more actively recruit.
Right. And so to this question of, we're gonna have an executive session later and talk about the appointments we're going to make, but we can probably take care of the bike walk committee membership size now. If folks are amenable. If folks are amenable. I don't know if there's any further discussion that's required on that, we'll sort of get it. So I'll just go ahead and move that the bike walk advisory committee membership be reduced from eight to six.
One second.
Great. Any further discussion? Very none, all those in favor say hi. Great, motion passes. The rest of that item will be dealt with in executive session and after. So that brings us to. Uh discussion and consideration of community vision and strategic action plan and we have joining us Ashley Snellberger. We're very excited to hear what you've got for us tonight and this conversation.
For having me tonight. So I am going to share my screen and um so I have a little bitty PowerPoint tonight. And you guys see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so tonight we're going to talk about um three important items. The first off is we do have the final version of the community vision and strategic action plan report. That was produced by Future IQ, um this has the addition of the. Action items that have been prioritized, we did a survey trying to prioritize those items. And so that has been included, uh when David did the presentation for you guys back in June, he went over preliminary. Uh prioritization of those action items, um we now have those in that final version. And you guys have that in your packet for you guys to view, we'll go over that a little bit. We're also going to talk about department work plans and what that's going to look like and then we're going to merge into something that Regina and I are calling the list. Um and so we'll get into that a little bit more. So first off, the strategic action plan report. As you guys know, um we, if I can get it to move. Hang on. There we go, um so in you guys, when you saw the report uh in June, we did go over the top pillars, but I wanted to bring those back to everybody's attention. The top three pillars that came out of um the prioritization for the pillars were housing and urban design, economic and business development and public services and facilities. Following that, like I said, we did prioritize the top action items. If you look at this little bit, this graph um on the screen, anything towards the left of the graph is what we're supposed to implement first. Anything on the right is is something that we'd implement last. So out of that prioritization survey, the top action items included provide responsible, open and transparent government, enhance downtown in quarters. And product and enhance safety. So uh tonight, we do have a recommendation for the council to um approve this report that's as presented. By Future IQ unless that you guys have changes that need to be made. Okay, so moving on, let's talk departmental headwork plans, so this is our next step in. The strategic planning process, uh the department headwork plans is something that uh we wanted to do as a way to. Take the work that we're already doing, that day to day work and align it with a community vision and strategic action plan and the budget. So the work planning is a way for us to coordinate the work that needs to be done with an emphasis on continuing that improvement and innovation within our city. So the department heads are currently working on um their plans right now. It is going to be a two year plan, so the plan that we are currently in FY twenty five and then it will include FY twenty six to align with FY twenty six. Budget that we're preparing for, um it will include things that they are currently doing, some improvements um to accomplish in the next fiscal year. And then evaluation methods um that they will use to report back on their accomplishments um throughout the year. So I'm going to show you an example of one page of my communication uh plan. So as you can see from the top, we have a goal that's aligned with our pillar and our action item. Then underneath that, we have our action items, these are the things we want to do, that's improvements to our department. For FY twenty five, we're using the goals that um they put in the budget documents that we did um last year. So those will be their um action items for FY twenty five. And then there to add an uh an action item or more for uh FY twenty six, you'll see that there's a timeline associated with that with the fiscal year. We do have budget resources where they have an allocation for specific parts of the budget, um it needs to go in there and who's responsible for it. After that, we have the current or ongoing work that the departments are already doing. We didn't want it to just be a plan that's all this new stuff, we also wanted to bring to the table what our departments are doing because they've got a lot of stuff going on. Every day and so this is where their current work that aligns whatever their their goals will be. And that timeline, it goes from daily to yearly or as needed, budget resources are aligned as well and then who's responsible. And the very bottom is the evaluation methods, those are not all my evaluation methods for this goal, it carries on to the next page. But they'll also have their evaluation methods and that's what they'll use to kind of gauge their progress. On this action plan and how they've moved that goal forward. Moving along, onto the list, so uh this list started. With by Regina, it was something that she started since she got here and it was when she started collecting. Things that came from the council, the community members and the staff and started just putting together this, wouldn't it be great list? And so we looked at this um and said, we need to really start prioritizing this. Within the pillars, the action items in the fiscal year. And so what you have in the packet is one that's been broken down, we we added the the pillars and the action items to all of these different project lists. And then we tried to assign a fiscal year, it's very, very, very preliminary on that fiscal year. Mainly because we don't have our department headwork plans yet and that's going, uh we feel that there's things that we're missing from. That the department headwork plans will give us um information on and we'll be able to add that in there, which will probably adjust that fiscal year. And so we are bringing this list to you mainly as to give you an overview of this list and to introduce you to this list. By no means is this list final for um, it's very preliminary, like I've been saying. So a few more caveats again.
I feel like we need twenty minutes of caveats, Ashley, just to, just to protect. Sort of Pavlovian, oh my god, it's a list, let's, sorry.
It's a big list and uh Regina and I have had a lot of discussions about this list, let's just, it's it's been a lot of discussions and how. We use this list and carry it into the strategic plan. So again, preliminary list, we're going to be raking down those department headwork plans to come. This also, this list isn't going to be set in stone, so once we have gotten uh our hands on it and kind of gotten a good grip on it. You guys will have a chance to look at it, there'll something be something that we evaluate yearly based off of the progress that we do with the work plans. We might look at things and say, we didn't accomplish this big projects um or we had to push this project back because we didn't have the funding for it. So now we need to adjust other projects based off of that. So again, it's, it will be something that we look at every year as we move forward with this. We do have asterisks next to the pillar or action items that are priorities so that you guys know which ones um are associated with priority items. Again, like I said, we broke these down to um pillars and action items and fiscal year. And so we might want to look at things and decide how we're going to prioritize that, is it most important for you guys to be pillars? Is it most important for action items, is it most important for fiscal year? Um and then we need to look and see what we've already committed ourselves to, like the JRP master plan. So we, those will obviously rise to the top because we've already committed ourselves to them. And then we'll need to look at this and say, is there anything that should or could be removed or pushed to a later date? We already touched on, the fiscal year is extremely preliminary, uh we'll um add, like I said, projects on that 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 are on the list. Based off of those work plans and then FY thirty is stand in for future, so we tried to make this a five year plan. But obviously there are some going to be things that are moved even farther than that, so I just know that FY thirty doesn't necessarily mean FY thirty. Okay, timeline for the work plans and our future plans, so from now until September. Um I'm going to be working with the department heads to develop their work plans, so we're set up some meetings um with them. And we'll be going through their work plans and trying to help them flesh out their work plans. Um because it's a different way of thinking for people, um and I want this to be something that's functional for the the department heads to use and the council to use. They'll give those to me in September along with the budget to Jess and then we'll look over those and uh work with them. To finalize their budgets and their work plans together and then we'll be presenting both of those documents to you in November, December, along with your budget day. And then in April, May, sometime in the spring, we hope to have our council and department head retreat. This will be an opportunity for us to report out those accomplishments that we accomplished in FY twenty five, because that's the year that we're in. So again, our work plans are FY twenty five is what we're working on currently right now and you will report out after the end of F. Towards the ends of FY twenty five of those accomplishments and then we'll move into FY twenty six. All of this stuff is supposed to help us always build for the next year, so at this retreat, we hope to go over what our progress was. What worked, what didn't work, what we need to adjust and then get our priorities from you guys to move forward into the next fiscal year. And our next round of work. So finally, uh our recommendations, again, like I said, we are asking you to approve the community vision and strategic action plan report. As it has been presented and then we want to get some high level feedback on this list. We don't want to really get in the weeds tonight, we just want to get in some high level thoughts from you guys and see if there's any issues that we really need to address. Before we ask or adding in those departmental work plans and then bringing this strategic plan list back to you guys. Regina, is there anything else that you would like to add? Um we've had lots of conversations about this, so I want to leave it also to you as well.
I think that was awesome, Ashley, so thank you, I don't have anything to add right now.
That was wonderfully complete and yet concise, so. Regina and I have also talked about the the opportunity for this to go completely off the rails. But as it's been pointed out tonight, we're one short, so um a couple. I think I'll just start, I I had a couple of brief questions about the report and they're really nitpicky and minor, so but. But they caught my eye, otherwise I think it's, it, I understand it, I've been over it a lot. One of them is just this concept of. And it's really nitpicky, Amber's going to slap me, let you excuse me, but like. Funding fire, police and rescue at their current levels. As is mentioned three or four times throughout this report and I don't think we want to do that, I think that's not quite what they're saying. It's what it says would mean that we cut them every year, what I think they mean is to provide. At minimum, so I would almost rephrase that because I think the intention is to say to continue to provide. At minimum what we're providing now for those entities, not keep it at current levels. It's a, it sounds like a semantic, but. It just struck me every time I saw it, it is in here a few times, so. Other than that, I like it, could you talk a little bit? I know I took the survey and it gave me pause, the very last survey where we we looked at prioritizing what we wanted to start with first after we looked at the pillars. I think it can be difficult for folks to get their head around because there is some disconnect there. You know, in terms of the action items that come first versus the pillars that are prioritized, you know, like open and transparent government by a long shot. Is curious to me in the first place, um until I read how it's defined, but it's way in the front of what we're going to do first. Even though the discussion and the narrative behind the housing and everything else seems much more. Deep and important to people, you know what I mean, so if you could talk about. Like how that goes together and how we're going to bring this forward, um you know, that difference between like what we do first and when versus how they were prioritized.
Yeah, it does, I, so the good thing about it is the part, the top three prioritization is actually does fall in the top three pillars. So we do have some core, some breakover or or not breakover, but uh toss over between the two. It's not that we have one pillar that's this and then an action item that's not one of those top pillars, so. I I was happy to see that we did have those um that people were combining those two different things. I think that, you know, when we look at this, these are very high level, big items. They're not, it's not so specific that we're going to do, you know, open and transparent government means that we're going to. You know, communicate more, that's not just the the diff, the wording there. I think that we're, when we look at this, we're obviously going to look also about what's coming out of our work plans too and seeing. I, a lot of this, this first year is us figuring out how we're going to work this all together. And I hate to, I hate to say that, but we've not done this before and so a lot of it is going to be. How it works best for our community to move this forward and so when I think about like our work plans, I feel like those are moving our. Actions and our pillars forward each time and these are the the pillars and the action items that came first, these are the things that over the next five years. That we want to try to focus on, but it doesn't mean that we're not going to do the other ones and it doesn't mean that like if we get to next year and let's like say something. Horrible happened and we had another pandemic, let's just say, knock on wood. Our priorities might shift and change because of what's going on in our environment and so we might have every year, we're going to be editing and flowing. And we, what our priority items might be this year might be different next year and as a council, that's going to be up to you guys to help guide us as a staff. On where those priorities are, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so, thank you.
Ashley just reminded me of one thing I did want to say and I s- um see John and Diane here. So what we have yet to sort of sort through is where and at what point we're also working in the committee feedback to this. And so that is definitely very much something we've got on our minds and how we, how we kind of think through that and communicate that. Both in terms of kind of bringing input up to the council to help in your decision making and and also sort of sending that back down once the priorities and strategies are. Are sorted out, made. And a a lot of that will also sort of shake out in the department work plans that are associated with those various committees that work as well.
Yeah, because I I was thinking, you know, to. You know, we we still need to get those groups together with us, we still need to get the three that you mentioned together and. Really sort of digest the work plans, the strategic plan, the list, you know, hear about the challenges each group is having. You know, yeah, that's still, still very much. Needs to be done. Amber, did you have anything?
I'm I'm still digesting.
Okay.
It's been a very busy week. Curious about some of the timing and. I kind of felt the ranking of. Government transparency so high was. Possibly a function of the times we're in at the moment and not necessarily. An indication that the city is falling down on this item.
And so my, and I can interject this for me because the way I interpreted it was, if we look at housing and urban development. And how that would come through and the people that weren't paying attention turned around and all of a sudden there's a four story building over here, you know. So it'd be the information of getting that out and and looking for feedback from people before they just turn around. And so I took a a larger approach to the whole thing to say while we're doing X in, we keep in mind Y. And I don't think it's a shot across the bow, any, anything to, for Essex Junction or as you said, that they were falling down. Uh I think it's just one of those things that we include as we work through things and uh it just keep it on the forefront to say. You know, hey, here we are, this is what we're looking at doing, here's what we're thinking about doing and and what is your feedback before we get? Through all of that.
I think, Tim, before you joined the council, um I had sent around to Regina and Ashley and the council. I had sent around to Regina and Ashley and the council. A model communications plan that was developed by the city of Portland, Oregon. It's called, I think it's called the Portland Participation Plan. And I, we talked about it a couple of times briefly. That does what you're talking about, Tim. So. I was looking, when you showed your example, Ashley, of your own work plan. I thought of the Portland plan and thought like, are we going to incorporate that? And, and where will we see it and how will we see it in action? And so, um, that was the weedy piece of what I resisted. I tried to resist and I couldn't.
It did come up when we heard, two meeting, a meeting or two ago, when we heard from CDE, right? We approved using that rubric and some of that, um, decision making, uh, some of those tools. And how we handle big decisions and well, first of all, how we determine the size of the decision we're doing with, right? And then, so if then, what is our engagement going to be?
Right.
And that being an aspect of the work plans perhaps, or, or maybe an appendix to then, you know, like, so where does this project land on that?
Right. Each work plan should talk about how they're going to outreach to the.
If it's required. And so with that particular decision, I did. Ask out loud at the end of that conversation for CD, you know, this feels like one of those decisions and we committed in September.
Yeah.
You know, and so. That can also have the impact of, of then. Bringing a capacity question to the table.
Yeah.
In terms of where that decision, where that project then lands is there. So, so getting our heads around, yes, we can do this now, but wait. Because it also, you know, included in that effort will be likely more staff or council or other time in. That outreach.
But I think the purpose of that rubric is to give all staff members, department heads especially. The ability to prioritize how they're going to communicate so that everything doesn't become a massive community participation.
Right.
And then everything gets slowed.
Right.
Yes. And, yeah, and, and we, we've developed these channels over time. Where it becomes more streamlined and people are aware of how we can communicate, how they can interact. We have their information.
Yeah.
And that, that two-way is, is much smoother, right? I think.
The other thing I wanted to point out was, um. I had, you recall, I talked about doing online Zooms with some economic development folks. And we held two Zooms and I sent out links to the conversations to all of the folks who were interested. And I'm seeing on here opportunities for, um, economic development downtown, community engagement. And like some of it all goes together and, um. The conversation that we're in, in the, where does it say here? Oh yeah. Downtown or Economic Development Committee, future after transit oriented design project, Amtrak and Main Street Park projects are complete or mostly underway. That's a really long time. So, uh, I'm glad that it says, unless a volunteer effort wants to start sooner.
Right.
I do think there is people, there are people out there who want to start some sort of volunteer downtown organization. So I would love for us to, at some point in the very near future, um, discuss what that might look like.
I think that's, I, I agree. I think that's a conversation we're having and we have to. We'll have to weigh what that looks like compared to the commitments that we already have for committees and staff. And we have the rec advisory we've committed to for quite a while and in addition to the. Charter, uh, required governance. So. But we can't let the, um, can't let the, can just wait.
Part of my thinking on that, just, um, it's probably obvious, but, um, all three of those projects will definitely help bring energy. And, um, address some very sore parts of the downtown and village center. That I think are fairly desperate and in need of. Help. So, um, I think. Downtown Committee slash Economic Development, those can mean lots and lots of different things. But, um, in terms of just really trying to help the vibrancy at, of the village and the downtown, I think those, those, those three things will help. Achieve some of that.
And build energy.
And build energy and we are committed to all of them already.
I think, I think what, when I go through, when I think about this list or when I talk to Regina sometimes about this list, thing that is always in my head and the worry I have is always just capacity.
Yeah.
You know, and it's, it's, um, and so I, every, for every, I think, thing I give you or I suggest or I email, there's probably five others that I don't dare. They're just waiting. They're on my list. Um, I'm sure others do something similar.
And it is the reason why Ashley did an excellent job, um, caveating so well. All of our concerns because this, um, really a missing component is what we're attempting to do here. Kind of big picture is help try to better explain, um, the day-to-day work. And what actual capacity we have, if any, on top of that. And then when we have a better handle on that, we can kind of look through this list, you know? Those fiscal years, me on my own, think this is roughly.
Yeah.
And they're really a comparison of one over the other as opposed to true indications that that's. Going to be a real accurate timeframe.
I think.
Without knowing what that full work plans from the departments look like yet.
I think one of the things that excites me the most about this is the fact that we can, over time, we'll get to a point where we can point to this, right? And when people ask questions about the budget, we'll have so much deep information to say. This is what's been accomplished. This is what the money went to. This is how we're measuring it. What do you think? What do you think that result has been? Kind of the participatory, not participatory.
Yeah.
Term.
Performance.
You know, if we can, so you know, you're getting ourselves from now, between now and let's say five or six years from now. To a point where it's really, I mean, when people talk about transparency, this is just such a great example of. Idea comes in, there's a process for it. It gets baked into this. There's a budget tieback to it that people can see. There's a metric. There's a evaluation to it. And, um. It's just a, a completely different way to be able to, to understand what a community is doing and spending, I think. And prioritizing, I think. So I think this is great. And I'm really resisting getting into the weeds.
Yeah. And there's so much information here. Uh, the, uh, the, the, this process has just been. Something that I don't think I really appreciated, how, how deep it went and how much information has come out of it. And how that has, that raw data has been turned into actionable information. And for those who haven't looked, this list that they keep referring to with very tentative fiscal years. That can be moved at any point in time where FY thirty means that it's off in the future. Is already five and a half pages long.
Right.
And so that's just a massive, massive list. And so really for me, thank you very much for all of your efforts that have gone into this. The way it's presented out made it really, really, really easy to understand. And, uh, coming into this new, uh, you know, I did attend some of the information in the, in the think tank stuff. Uh, I really appreciate the way that this has been disseminated.
Thank you.
I think Amber said she didn't have anything. And if that's still the case, is there anything else Regina or anything from board members? Ashley, anything else? Does it sound like, and I know Diane in the audience had a comment she wanted to make. So if you, I'm coming up to the table.
Oh, it's a nice report. I was encouraged by seeing the list, um, because it's not a plan until it actually has actionable items. So I'm encouraged that you're going to have the department heads flesh things out. And as I was reading things, I went, some of these things are already done, but that's just me. I'm in the planning department. Um, and there's a lot of things were kind of put on our plate eventually speaking from that point. My colleagues made me the chair the other day, so, um, I kind of felt somewhat responsible here to say. By the way, we are in fiscal twenty five and two years from now is going to be fiscal twenty seven. So telling me that we're going to start something in fiscal twenty six for, no, no, sorry. Comprehensive plan starts soon. Okay. Because it has a timeline. That is supersedes what you think I is what we now are dealing with some legislative law things. And if, how this dovetails with a comprehensive plan. Should be looked at, uh, because some of those things are already, should, should be in the works regardless. Because we committed to them. Um, and how many have we gotten done and where are we going? So that's also part of planning, uh, except we wrote that down and said, we, we have it done by twenty seven, twenty twenty seven. So, you know, I would commend you on, on putting the, the report together. I mean, it reads well. Uh, it's nice to see the public comments, uh, tells me how much. The community is not aware of the things that already occur, that already exist. But that just means we need to tell them that we already have maps and all this other stuff. They just need to. Ask for them and we need to provide them. So it's, you know, like, did you know that there's a walking map of Essex Junction? There's actually routes. I actually live on one. I didn't know until I picked up a copy of it, that's at the Brownell Library. So, um, that's just a matter of putting it either on the website or printing more of those little pocket guides. So it's, hey, it's what we decide to do is this government, what do we want to encourage? So. Those things exist. I'm sure that Ashley was not aware that that walking map exists. And, uh, but there's a lot of stuff there. So, um, but I think we need to find out ourselves. What, what exist or exists that we can disseminate and not reinvent the wheel because it's already been invented. And, and move forward from there. But I look forward to speaking, you know, with you guys at some point in time as the planning commission. And, and John and, and the rest of there and DRB, um, especially after some comments where. People are. Nice that they made the comments, but it would have been nice to have had them come visit with us and talk to us about some of the things they're concerned about. And when it comes to the planning commission and that's worth it. So it's, uh, work in progress. We can always move forward and get better at. So that's. So not that they have to get in the weeds, but I'm going to get in the weeds about fiscal years. So, um, because the clock's ticking. And it all depends on how long you guys take a look at whatever we come up with and. Last time we got close to, too close to the wire. So, and we're going to have more edits to come with you for the land development code. Those should be coming. And they have their own little timeline going on. So. Not, not to, you know, dissuade you from stuff, but there's a lot of stuff coming down the pipe. That isn't in that plan. So.
Okay.
You for listening.
Sure. Thanks. John Alden online.
Hi. Good to see everybody tonight. Uh, Diane, it sounds like you're going to be busy for the next couple of years. I think the timing's perfect. It's like shuffling a deck of cards. You got actually doing one shuffle and you doing the other. So for me, it's perfect. And you let, y'all let us know when you're done and we'll take care of the rest. I, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. We, um, I was a member of the downtown steering committee. I don't know. It's probably 10 years ago now and we had, you know, a lot of business owners and, and other interested parties. And I think that effort culminated in the designation of our village center, uh, at the state level. But, um, I will turn over my entire three inch binder to somebody. And you can, uh, comb through that and, uh, make sure that we do have all the things that have already been done. And the efforts that we've already, uh, gone through, uh, you know, well documented and we can pick up where we left off. Um, and I will also caution after maybe 10 years as a member, uh, founding member of the heart and soul effort. That capacity and, and clarity are kind of like the two major issues. And so I appreciate what people have said about that already. It's hard not to bite off more than you can chew. And once you've developed all that information, the ability to clearly disseminate it back out. In a s- strategic and recognizable way is super important. So to, a nice job on doing that so far.
Thanks, John.
I'd love to see that binder, John.
I'll bring it down tomorrow.
Make a copy just in case. She may not get it back.
That's my plan.
He doesn't want it back.
No, I mean, yeah, yeah, he doesn't want it back, right? I, you know, I think based on those two comments, I think one, one thing is also kind of just reminded me that, you know, this question of capacity and priorities and everything, you know? When we go to the community around budget time and, and you know, we've heard from them. We, we'd like to get this, this and this done. And we say, okay, we can do X, Y, Z might be this much more or might require this. I mean, it, you know, this is going to be a great opportunity to kind of have those conversations and show people, you know? Try to figure out with them what their, how priority is priority, you know, I mean, basically in tax time, you know, if, if there's. If, if we read full bore of the economic development and housing day and we decide, I'm just making this up. I'm not even going to make anything up. Forget it's too dangerous. Um, it just helps us a bunch of time, work with folks with what we might propose and, and help us explain it. So. In terms of, I don't see anybody else on Zoom. Let me just make sure and see any other hands. In terms of what we need from this, we need to approve. If we feel like doing that, um, the community vision and strategic action plan report. Amy Cooper online.
Hi, thanks for letting me talk. I couldn't find the button. Um, hi. Uh, I'm so excited about how hard Ashley has worked and how thorough this strategic action plan is. I applaud the fact that I see that the governance committee or, or whatever you're, I'm sorry, I can't remember the name I saw in the packet of the rec committee. I've been watching on YouTube. And I'm so glad that's in there and I so appreciate and value the hard work y'all are doing. And I just want to echo a little bit, a little bit of what Diane said and a little bit of what, um, John Alden said. And I mean this with care and kindness. So please hear, hear me from that space. Please be careful that we don't get back on a hamster wheel that we've been on before. With all the, uh, the, the ingestion of what people want. And then the corresponding output to community. We've, we've done all this, right? We've done all this countless times before. I get it that this is different. We're renovating Tulung and I get all the differences. But I'm imploring you, I guess, to keep your eyes on the, on the prize on the ball. Because that government transparency, I don't think is just because people are just saying it. I think they really want it. And you are all good people. I know you're good people. You know, you're good people. And I really want this to work this time around. I really want us to follow it through. I know that's Ashley's plan. And I'm sure it's yours. So if you don't mind that I might occasionally come in and like tap a table and say, hey, you guys, don't forget this or don't forget that. Because I really want to see us get off that hamster wheel and grow forward. And I'm really excited about it because we've, we've been in this game a long time, all of us. I mean, the whole community. I don't just mean us together as people. And thank you for your time and thanks for letting me talk.
Thanks, Amy. All right. So, let's see anybody else there. So it sounds like the group council's open to approving this. So if there's a motion on page nine. Someone wants to.
I move that the city council approve the community vision and strategic action plan report to help guide the work plan prioritization over the coming years.
Second.
Great. Um, does it look like there's any?
Sorry, just a question on the motion. Um, do you want us, uh, does the council want us to edit that language as Raj described earlier?
Did that make sense? Was that too semantic? Was that too minor?
It did make sense. I don't know that you need, do you need to reword the report itself or do we just need to have that understanding?
That's I guess the question.
Think we collectively have the understanding.
It's for future, I mean, it's for future folks to follow. I mean, it seems silly not to change it.
Right.
I don't know how hard it is to change. So Ashley and Regina, I'll ask your feedback. Like, I, I was opening that by and admitting that that's probably very much in the weeds. I just. I don't know how hard it is to change. So Ashley and Regina, I'll ask your feedback. Like, I, I was opening that by and admitting that that's probably very much in the weeds. I just.
It's not hard to change. If it's something that you guys want changed, I can go back to future IQ, ask them to specifically put in a sentence about that to make those changes. They'll get it back to me. Um, and if you guys are good, once those changes have been made, um, they'll give me a final report and we can be done with it. If that's how you guys want to move forward.
I, I think we're going to prove it tonight as amended. And I trust that you both understand the intent and we can just move from there. So we don't delay this anymore.
That's acceptable.
All right. So if you'd, um, uh, just put it as amended.
Amend the motion to move that the city council approved the amended community vision and strategic action plan report to help guide the work plan prioritization over the coming years.
Second.
Great. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you very much, Ashley.
Appreciate it. And Regina. All right. Discussion and consideration, uh, item five, five D, discussion and consideration of FY twenty five tax rate. I can't see.
I'm here.
There she is.
With a much more mundane and boring topic than Ashley had. Uh, so if you'll recall back to budget time, the city, uh, voters approved the city budget. With eleven million, one hundred ten thousand, three hundred forty six dollars to be raised in property tax revenue. At the time, uh, at budget time, we calculated or estimated that the tax rate would come in at point nine eight zero seven. Um, the good news is there was a very, very slight increase in the grand list, um, of the, of point six four percent. Um, so the tax rate is actually coming in a little tiny bit lower at point nine, seven, four, two. And as you kind of scroll down through the memo and the chart at the bottom. You'll see that there are, in addition to the general fund tax rate, there is also a tax agreement rate. So this was also voted on and approved, uh, this spring for, uh, veterans exemptions above what the state automatically allows. Uh, the city is responsible for coming up with the education portion of those. Tax agreements or exemptions rather. And then we also have the approved, voted and approved economic development rate of a penny. Um, so that is remains unchanged from the prior year. The total tax rate, city tax rate is coming in at five, or sorry, is coming in five point nine percent. Higher than FY twenty four, which is exactly what we projected during budget time. So the estimated tax increase on a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar property will be about one hundred fifty three dollars per year. Again, just on the city, um, portion of your tax bill.
Great. Thank you, Jess.
Yep.
Regina, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
I do not have anything to add.
Any questions from counselors?
No.
No.
Great. I do not have any questions. I think that's pretty straightforward. Anyone in the audience in the room that has anything they'd like to discuss? Anyone online on Zoom that has any questions or comments on this budget item? Not seeing any hands raised. We'll give another few seconds. I guess I do have one question. Now that we've set the tax rate, when should folks expect to see their property tax bills?
So we.
Number fifteen, right?
Yes. So we are, we have our, um, appointment set with Nemrick, who is the software company that we use for all of our accounting functions. They, the finance team will be working with them on August seventh to prepare, calculate and produce the bills. They'll head off to the printer from there. So should be hitting people's mailboxes prior to the fifteenth, which is the drop dead date the state requires that they must be mailed by August fifteenth, postmarked by August fifteenth. Um, with the first payment being due on September fifteenth.
Okay, got it. Thank you. I am not seeing anyone with any hands raised on Zoom, so I will entertain the motion on packet page fifty four or make it.
I move that the city council approved the FY twenty five tax rate as presented.
Second.
Great. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jess.
Thanks.
All right. Five E. Twenty twenty four legislative update, and I think we have, uh, special guests tonight. Our representatives Karen Dolan and Lori Houghton are joining us.
Okay, so, um, I'm going to pull up this presentation, but I'm not really going to go through it in detail. Just give me a second here.
Karen and Lori, thank you for sticking with us to the meeting.
Glad to be here. There we go. Okay. Okay, so I put this presentation together, um, a couple of weeks ago. And this has been in the packet since, um, Friday, uh, it. I imagine Lori and Karen are still exhausted. This was quite the year of of bills coming out of the session. So, um, and there are quite a number of things that have an impact on municipalities. So, um, I have identified the things that I think are kind of really the big ones. There are a lot of other little ones too, and we will continue to keep posted. Uh, the LCT has been doing an awesome job. Um, keeping all of us posted and keeping us up to speed as we kind of move along. Um, and we have already put some of the things that, um, were now required to do in, in place. So um, I'll start at the top here, uh, open meeting law. There are some, um, kind of structural, uh, things that have been established under the new open meeting law, um, where, uh, committees are defined as uh, advisory committees or non-advisory committees. Um, essentially, non-advisory are you folks, all folks who deal with budget stuff, legislative stuff. And, uh, um, advisory, um, are folks that really are here to advise you on the direction and the action that you take um, for the city. Um, depending on which bucket committees are in, um, there's a requirement that depends on what type of meeting you can hold, whether hybrid, in person, or uh, virtual, um, important thing for council to know, we can no longer hold virtual only meetings. And for also important thing to understand for, uh, non-advisory boards are, there is now a recording requirement that has to be posted on the website. So we will be following all of that. Um, and there are also some other things in there, like, uh, if there is, if somebody, um, out in the community feels that there's a violation of some kind against the open meeting law. Uh, we now have on our website how to go about making that complaint, if there is a complaint and how, um, how to address that. Code of Ethics.
Yeah, why don't we just, yeah, let's do it.
Yeah. On the open meeting law requirement that non-advisory bodies have to record. Um, I know that we pay CCTV to record these meetings. And I think planning commission means.
DRB meetings.
DRB meetings. So we do not record the BCA meetings. Or the library trustees. So is this a budgetary impact for us? We have to invest more in recording and then in storage?
So are, um, the recording requirement, um, can be done through Zoom. Uh, and so essentially we will on our website link, so we don't necessarily need town meeting TV to step in and do those meetings that they're not doing right now. Um, we can use Zoom and put that link up on the website and the, um, data does live in our Zoom account.
Yeah.
It's so it won't be a budgetary issue for our website, but it will potentially over time be a budgetary issue for our Zoom account if we have to increase capacity.
Well, yeah, they don't, they don't. They allow you to keep certain recordings for a certain length of time, but then you have to get rid of them. So maybe YouTube channel is a better.
Yeah, and I, you know, um, appreciate certainly town meeting and because the big, what they do is they're archiving for us.
Exactly.
Long term. Um, to be clear, the open meeting law requirement is that these recordings are posted for thirty days.
Yeah.
That's the requirement. So I think we can always certainly have a discussion about whether we want to do something above and beyond that. But that's the requirement and we can, I think we can meet that.
And we could just download the Zoom meetings, send them to CCTV and then they would tag them as Essex Junction and archive them.
Is there a fee for that?
Correct about that, Bobby? That's my thought. But yes, there, there is a fee.
Yeah, and I, I'd like to.
But it's not a recording fee, like, like.
No, no, I understand. So I'd like to, you know, if we're going to do that, I'd like to explore what storage would be from our web vendor, from, uh, our IT vendor and versus.
It's free on.
Versus. It's not free on what? It would be considered a business account.
Right. But then you have two different places for residents to go to find information. That's something.
Well, we did all still be linked, but yeah, I mean, it is worth a conversation in terms of, or hearing what staff think in terms of, you know, meeting that the letter of the law at thirty days or um, or at minimum saving them in our own server so that if somebody requested it. We could provide it somehow, like, you know, assume we'll cut you off after a certain threshold, so they will have to be downloaded or deleted, but we have options.
I just can't imagine the value of holding on to a video for thirty days. The whole point of archiving these things.
No, I, I agree. Especially with brief minutes, you know, like.
Right.
You know.
Thank you. That's just a question.
Okay, um, so let me just pick up on this slide here. Did it adjust for me? I'm hoping this is going to work. Nope.
We break it.
Just a bit of a lag. I'll try to talk slow, but the slide, there we go. Okay. The, uh, other thing I just wanted to point out here on this slide is VLCT Secretary of State's Office and Vermont School Boards Association created a set of FAQs. That's really pretty helpful in, um, sorting, sorting this out. Okay, so code of ethics. Um, so essentially, um, we as of January one, twenty twenty five, we will need to adopt the, uh, new municipal uniform code of municipal ethics that is, um, stated, uh, quite specifically within state statute itself. So we will be, um, working to get that done. Uh, one thing to point out is that our current conflict of interest and ethics policy covers all staff. Um, state statute doesn't necessarily cover all staff and I would assume that we will have a conversation about it, that we want to, um, have it cover all staff. So um, we will be taking more of a look at that. There is a lot more in here. There's, uh, required training. And a lot of this will be sort of put together by, um, the state and, uh, we've, will get all of that incorporated. Um, there is now a new whistleblower protection, um, for municipal employees. We will make sure to get that into the personnel policy. And yep, so there's the note about, um, covering all staff and, uh, just pointing out here that our, um, charter does have some language, so we will get this all clear and sort it out. Um, just note here at the bottom, it's the state ethics commission that's really got the authority here in terms of guidance and advice to municipalities. So that's who, uh, we will be working with, um, going forward to get all this sorted out. Cannabis. So this, um, bill establishes a method for municipalities to create minimum setback requirements for outdoor cannabis cultivators. Um, so as a, um, just a reminder to folks, um, prior legislative session. Could be two legislative sessions ago. I'm forgetting in my mind, outdoor cannabis cultivation was sort of, uh, some changes were made there to limit, I mean, municipal authority over outdoor cannabis cultivation. This sort of goes back, uh, in a little bit of a direction, sort of acknowledging that in some more urban, more densely populated areas, this can be really a difficult challenge. Um, so we will be looking at this further. Um, the different districts, uh, take effect January one, twenty twenty five. Um, we will be looking at this in more detail, um, to follow up and see if there are changes that we should make. Uh, just a little bit more detail on that information. And we'll have to, well, think through whether to set up a cannabis cultivation district or, or not.
And this was an interesting last minute kind of compromise that in a way, doing nothing gets us closer to our original ask. So that will be interesting conversation to have about, because there's also a study committee now.
Yes, thank you for.
Looking for the next legislative biennium.
Yeah. I think the, um, I think all, there is a study committee that will take a look at this from a broader perspective. Get some input from lots of different folks to sort of sort through, uh, what's the right long-term solution for addressing outdoor cannabis cultivation for issues like this. So we will stay tuned. Libraries. Um, there, uh, was a library bill that came out this year, S two twenty. Um, one of the things that I know the library's working through over there to try to figure out how to switch up the databases and sort this out is what age, the age up to which custodial parents or guardians have access to their child's library records from age sixteen down to twelve. So, um, there's that. There's a number of other different things in there. Um, it also does, um, add some clarification, uh, regarding municipal library director and, um, under the supervision and control of the library board of trustees unless another relationship is otherwise specified in the charter. So we, uh, will be looking at that further, but, um, I think our charter is really pretty clear on that already. All library staff, including the library directors, uh, and employee of the city. Um, housing permit and reform. So this bill, I don't know if it's one of the longest bills in the history of bills.
Did you read it all?
I did not even come close. Um, and really I am not, I'm not going to go into this in too much detail. I sort of just put in some of the highlights in here, but, um, so really big picture to kind of understand here, last year, um, the legislative changes, uh, that came forward to try to really help us address this housing crisis that we are in. Um, looked quite a bit at the municipal zoning level. This really looks quite a bit more at, um, the state and act two fifty level and kind of the whole structure and system that has sort of built that, um, to today. So, um, there's a lot that will come out of this eventually, um, but there's a lot on the regional plans. Regional planning commissions plate of, um, reworking some of the regional maps and that will, um, have some impact on us. And how this all comes together, both in terms of, um, promoting more housing. Um, and really I'll say, uh, the intent and the thought behind this for quite some time has been act two fifty is based on some threshold number. Act two fifty is based on some threshold numbers that are absent any kind of geographic location on the ground. So, um, if you build ten or more houses, it doesn't matter whether you're right here or you're, um, in the middle of, a rural community, you're gonna go to Act two fifty just because of that size. There's been some shifts and adjustments over the years to contemplate that the designated centers have a little bit of a different parameter, which is why we live under a different parameter right now here in Essex Junction. But really that this whole new system is intended to really take a look at that. Geographically, Act two fifty is in place to protect, um, our environment and there are trying to get to a place where development should happen because that's where we've intentionally said growth should happen. That's kind of the idea. There's a whole heck of a lot in here, um, including lots, uh, different funding sources, um, to try to keep moving on the housing, issue.
So is it safe to say then that some of what we've seen or a lot of what we've seen of people's interest in housing and development in the strategic plan in the last two years of the legislature mean that our community is basically going to see a lot of growth in this area over the next four to ten years? Well, a lot of our community was sort of exempt from Act two fifty review anyway. But the push is really for communities like ours to take on a lot, a lot of the growth at this point, it feels like.
So, um, and I would say, uh, it's a, it's a real reason why we're doing the transit oriented development project right now, um, and really trying to figure out how to, how to do that appropriately and correctly. Um, I think there's good, um, logical reason why, um, there ought to be a focus where we have transit service already, uh, and where we have water and sewer service already. And can, um, really help address that housing crisis in a way that we're not sprawling in the state of Vermont and just increasing long-term operation and maintenance of new infrastructure if we just keep on going out. Exactly what that looks like here, I would really encourage folks to really pay attention to the Transit Oriented Development Project when we get that up and running and out. Because I think we're, we will really try to bring some visualizations to what, what that can look like, so folks can feel comfortable with, um, where we're going.
How will that timeline mesh with the comprehensive plan we redo? Sounds like it might mesh well or overlap.
Yep, so I think the intent is that the Transit Oriented Development Project is gonna be moving faster. The Planning Commission will get a, um, kind of a kickoff meeting at their meeting at the, in August. And, um, the timeline's pretty quick at the moment. I'm a little hesitant that that's a real timeline, but it is currently at the moment relatively quick, like in the, late winter, we would have something that we're, um, moving on, so, yeah, I don't.
It was two years.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be quite that quick, but we'll see.
Wow. So one could really allegedly really or, or potentially really inform the other.
Yes.
Oh, I thought they were gonna overlap a little more.
Yep. Um, okay, uh, let me. I'm not sure what's next. Let me just go through these real quick. Uh, changes to the property tax, um, abatement and tax sales. Um, so you may remember we had the tax sale policy and delinquent po- tax policy on a previous agenda and we tabled that, um, just to be able to stop and take a look and make sure that we were, um, meeting these new laws correctly, and so the, new tax sale policy and delinquent tax policy you've got in your consent agenda tonight, um, does meet these new, these new requirements. And we will, um, stay tuned with the, uh, Department of Taxes as they, um, work on translation services and a number of different things that are really, um, helpful in this bill to make sure, uh, we are being transparent and, um, and clear about this, so folks, folks know, um, the best way to be able to get in a payment plan and, um, make sure we don't have to get to the place of the tax sale, because that is not the hope. Um. So charter amendments, just so folks know, um, because that this process takes a little bit of time. Last April in twenty twenty three, not this past April, uh, the, um, Essex voter, Essex Junction voters approved some charter changes. Those were approved by the, um, legislature this year, so, um, those were all relatively minor. Uh, one of the things included no longer electing a moderator because the moderator is no longer playing the same role that they played when we actually had a town meeting style vote. So those charter changes are, are set, um, just so folks know, we don't have a full, complete new charter with these changes, like really in there yet, but that, that will be coming, we'll get that, um, done. Um, few other things of relevance I just wanted to, to make folks aware of, um, there is a county and regional governance study, which establishes a committee to study, um, how to improve structure and organization of county and regional government, so, um, that will be interesting. S three oh nine, um, interesting stuff in here, including, um, it requires that drivers give at least four feet of clearance when passing people walking, biking and rolling, so. Just so folks are aware. Um, the other thing that I just thought was sort of fascinating is there's a thing called an Idaho stop. This is just being studied. This is not coming into play, but essentially as a bicyclist, if you come to a stop sign and you clearly see no other folks at that, uh, intersection, um, you would be allowed to roll through. So, interesting. This has changed in other places already, like Portland, Oregon. Federal rulemaking regarding website accessibility, so this is not from the state legislature, this is from federal government and from rulemaking, just in terms of stepping up the website level requirements for ADA, so, uh, Ashley has that on her radar and will make sure that we are, um, keeping in compliance with that. We've got until April twenty twenty seven, so we've got some time, but we'll definitely be thinking about that. There might be a budget implication associated with that one. Um, there is also, um, there were two other things I was gonna point out and I forget what they are right now, but, um, I will remember them, I'm sure, and let you folks know, but essentially, for the most part, um, oh, sorry, there was a whole nother slide. That's fine. Um, okay. Act one sixty, um, domestic animals running at large and also a little bit of a shift to the animal control officers, so we will, um, be working with SXPD to make sure we are, um, in line with these trainings and make sure, um, we are up to speed there. Then that's it. Okay.
Okay.
Um, so yes, there are lots of other little, little things that, um, we've got as well, but I think for the most part, those are the big things, um, and we will continue to adjust, um, as we need to.
That was a lot.
Yeah.
And it was a excellent, um, compilation that you put together and really appreciate you getting it to us a week, a week in advance, we can go through it. And VLS, like you said, VLCT keeps, um, putting more info out, so, um.
Yep.
Karen and Lori, that was a very busy five months, six months. Anything that we didn't cover that you two are particularly interested, proud or involved in from the session? If you wanna call out?
I can start. I just really wanna thank Regina. That was an excellent overview. I feel like it refreshed my memory of being back in the State House and passing those, um.
Trauma, maybe?
No, 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 it's all good, because now I'm removed from it, but we did have a really ambitious and productive, um, session, and I think especially this year before the biennium ended, we're really trying to, um, pass a lot and and people saw, like, a lot of it came at the, the end of it, so I'm like, do I even know what the latest version that we passed, because there was a lot of work to really, um, get compromised, so. Um, I think just in hearing this, because I was here for the strategic, um, visioning piece as well, um, like some of these laws coordinated with that, with the open and transparent government piece of it. Um, the open meeting law, the ethics piece of it was to really see some consistency at the state level and just initiate a foundation of that and see where we can go. And I appreciate, I think it was Raj, your question about the, the housing piece of it, because I do think that was another theme from it, is that, city centers, downtown centers, you know, are gonna play a key role in the hu- housing crisis, but then it's up to each community to kind of really reflect, like, okay, how much do we wanna commit and what is our role, so, um, I, it's just great to see that there was meshing of what was happening at the legislative level and the questions and things that you're asking at the city council level, so appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and I actually, if you don't mind, I'm gonna take a minute and talk a kind of a public service announcement for the community, so in twenty twenty two, we passed legislation, it's now, it's Act one sixty seven, and basically we directed a remount and care board to hire a consultant, um, and do a really deep dive into our hospital system and specifically our hospital system, but he also kind of went broader. And so obviously, a lot of the cost increases that we're all experiencing are due to healthcare. And so he has now come back, um, he did a whole lot of meetings, met with communities and now is coming back to communities with his findings. And the next step from that will be a report that will come out this fall that will help Agency of Human Service Green Mountain Care Board and the legislature where appropriate to hopefully, you know, make some changes to ensure we have a affordable and a sustainable healthcare system going forward. So my community, um, announcement is that on July twenty ninth, that there will be a presentation at the South Burlington Library, um, from this consultant, Bruce Hemery. I forget, Har Mery, I think is how you say his last name, and it will be about our healthcare system through UVMMC. And so I highly recommend if people are interested, it's, they're only doing it in person, so there's no video you can watch, but, uh, I think it starts at or I can, I will, we'll be, I'll be putting something down on Front Porch Forum, um, but I, I highly recommend that if you can make it that you do, I think it's, um, I've gone to a couple throughout the state and they're very, very informative.
Great, appreciate that. And I just also wanna say thank you for being available throughout the session and the session before, for questions, feedback, emails, phone calls, all of the, the assistance you both provided, um, and, and the background and the help, um, very much appreciated. Amber, I can barely see with the reflections, but do you have anything? Just wanna kind of go around the room.
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Thanks, Lori. Thanks, Karen. Thanks, Regina.
Yeah, thank you both very much for advocating on our behalf.
You know, for folks listening or folks watching this later, the presentation we just went through has a lot of links to really good summaries that are actually very approachable. If people are curious about some of these things, um, they're quick reads and they're interesting. Perhaps not all eight bills or nine bills, but, um, there's something in there for everybody. And, and gonna be some impact that you're gonna have, uh, down the line in your community, so.
Raj, can I just add one thing? And I would just say, as people review things or have questions, obviously, reach out to Karen or I, um, we're always available to help answer questions and provide more information where needed.
That's great. Thank you. There's only one person in the audience, so I'm gonna call her by name and ask her if she has any questions or comments. Diane, anything on this topic?
Thank you, Karen, for doing an excellent job. Thank you for, for standing up for people here in the city. Thank you.
And I'm not, I hope you heard that from Diane. Um, so thank you. And I'm not seeing anyone with their hand raised on Zoom. Uh, there's no action item on this, so, um, yeah, really interesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, hope to see you both around town soon.
Thank you, everyone, for all your work.
Thanks. Have a good night. All right, well, the next thing is an executive session, so we can, um, perhaps consider the consent agenda first. entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will move to approve the consent agenda.
I will second. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Uh, motion passes unanimously. Manager report, customer comments?
Um, so for me, thanks, Tim, for recognizing Ron Bundy earlier, um, and his help with Plainfield. I just wanted to also, uh, add to that message for the community as a whole in terms of, uh, if folks are interested in helping the communities and individuals who are, really still struggling with this last, uh, flood event, um, if you're interested in volunteering, you can go to vermont.gov backslash volunteer. Um, and any interest in financial donations, you can go to, um, btfloodresponse.org. Um, so just two ways to help folks. Also, just wanna let folks know, uh, again, that we are set up, the city offices are still set up at Two Lincoln, we just are in a different part of the building. So now you access it from the entrance that is closest to the fire station. Um, and that's all.
Great. Anything from anyone? Uh, some of us had the opportunity to go to the fire department, um, on the eighth and, um, witnessed some life-saving awards being handed out to our firefighters. I really encourage folks to go to our website or our Facebook page and read more about, um, the incidents and the firefighters that received them, among them, uh, Tim Miller. So thank you to the firefighters and it was, uh, well, well timed, because during the ceremony, right as it was about to start, they were called out for a call, and I believe also right after we left.
It always looks good when the truck's leaving a parade.
Right, so it was well done on that front. And really, really proud of the, of the department. That's all I have. So, executive session, find the memo.
We're going into executive session for two different reasons.
Correct. So there's two.
Memos are in two different places.
Yeah, so I, someone wants to find the one from the interviews. I have the one from the contract.
Interviews.
Interviews are page four and five, I think.
Okay.
So I moved that the city council entered into executive session to discuss appointment of public officials pursuant to one VSA three one three A three to include the city manager.
Second. Is that all?
Yeah, it's just one. That's that one.
And I'll move that the city council make the specific finding that premature disclosure of contractual matters would place the city at substantial disadvantage and move that the city council enter a new executive session to discuss a contract pursuant to one VSA section three one three A one A to include the city council and city manager. Two motions on the table, do them as one. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Both motions pass unanimously. I believe we'll come back for a moment to the meeting, um, following to announce, uh, announcements for committees. Should be less than thirty minutes. And we're in recess.
Okay, I'm gonna start the recording.
Okay, city council's back in session. Um, I am going to make, uh, some motions for some committee appointments. So I'll move that we appoint Andrea Short Sleeve for a three-year term, Leslie Goldring for a term that ends in June twenty twenty five, and Warren Spinner for a three-year term to the Tree Advisory Committee. And I'll further move that we appoint Luke Brockmire to the Development Review Board for a three-year term ending in June twenty twenty seven. And then we appoint Kirsty Pascal to the Planning Commission to finish out a vacancy with a term ending in June of twenty twenty six.
One second.
Excellent. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Motion passes unanimously. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Your adjourn.